I'll rise for the pledge allegiance to remain standing afterwards.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for a moment of silent prayer to help guide and direct us. Thank you. Roll call, please.
William Dorsey.
President.
David Kramer.
Here.
Mark Lehman.
Here.
Tim McKinley.
Here.
Larry Rule.
Here.
Ed Weiss.
Thank you. Need approval on the agenda. I'm going to recommend that we move under new business, item number two, as number two, under citizens and guests, since it's related.
To move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Approval of the May 8th minutes. Did we get that one correction?
Yes.
Okay. Any changes or corrections?
Move to approve.
Second.
And a motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, under citizens and guests, we have Kristen Martin here from PDS, who's going to talk to us about our Z21 ordinance.
Yes, so, thank you. It's been a couple of years since I've been, but I am here again tonight just to present the final draft and some changes to the new zoning code, should it be adopted. So before I get started, just want to say a quick thank you to the folks on the screen here. We had a large panel that met for about two years, pretty frequently. So almost every month, we met to go over the zoning code, go over new concepts. And they did a really great job. Everyone worked really well together to make the best decisions that they could for the city. So just some city interaction that we had. Like I said, it's been a couple of years since I've been here, but we actually started meeting with the City of Crestview Hills Working Group back in April of 2023. So again, about a little over two years. I think we originally said the project would take about 18 months before adoption to get through, and I think we stayed on track. So that was good. These meetings that we met addressed just different decision points, that there were changes that were made. So we made decision points. We also looked at the current code and we tailored that. If there were any issues, we worked on that together. And then there are, Crestview Hills is about the third phase, so all the other cities in Kenton County have either adopted or are working through the same process, so that we have a similar code. And those first groups that we had did have some issues, and so we were able, with Crestview Hills being the third group that went through, to kind of go ahead and take care of those, so that that's not an issue as well. And we were regularly working with similar cities. So Fort Mitchell, Edgewood, the areas that surround you and keep that like characteristics of the neighborhood, we were checking to make sure what their decision points were, were similar to yours. And then, so as we get started, we'll look at the zoning districts. A major part of simplifying the zoning code was to create a more user-friendly code. And part of this is a reduction of the amount of zoning districts. So like many other cities, over the years, new zoning districts will be added, but they will be very similar. They may have just one minor change, like a lot area or setback difference. So part of this was just reducing those similar zones to match and reduce that number. And so Crestview Hills, their code currently has 16 zoning districts, and we are reducing that to 13. And so I think you guys have a copy, but this is a little bit difficult to see. This is a new zoning map. And it's very important to remember that as we go through these next couple of slides, that if the existing code is single-family, the letters may change, but residential is going to say residential, commercial is going to say commercial, industrial is going to stay industrial. So again, just want to point that out, that the letters may look different, but they are keeping that same characteristic. So first, I'm going to talk about the residential zones. Crestview Hills is going to have five proposed residential zoning districts within the city. There are going to be residential large lot subdivision, residential compact subdivision, residential conventional, and residential mixed, and then residential multifamily. So the RLLS, which is going to be the residential large lot subdivision, is the area on the map that's like lighter in yellow. And as you can see, this makes up majority of the residential area within the city. These are low-density, single-family residential dwellings. The compact subdivision, which is the RCPS, is located to the right of your map. And this is the area of Campus Drive. This is a single-family residential district on smaller lots. And then the residential conventional subdivision is the RCVS. This is the bright yellow on the screen. This is a single-family zone with different lot sizes, and this is the area of Sorority Court, Fraternity Court, University Circle, Versi Court, and College Park Drive. The residential mixed is going to be on your screen. This is a single-family attached, single-family detached, and multifamily. This is the area of Palmer's Court, Champion's Way, and Nicholas Lane. And then the multifamily is represented by the light brown color to the right of your screen. And this is the area of Tuscany Valley, Rhine Valley, Napa Valley. And this allows for a combination of single-family attached and detached, multifamily, two-family, three- and four-family homes. And then we have our commercial districts. So there's going to be two commercial districts. We've got the HLC, which is the area of Mansion Place. This is going to be a direct transfer from the existing code. So the way it is now is going to remain that way in the new code. And then we have the community commercial zone, or the CC zone, which is going to be in the middle of your screen here. And this is the current shopping center zone, which is Crestview Hills Town Center and Crestview Hills Town Center Boulevard. Then we're going to have our employment districts. There's going to be three of those, the BP1, BP2, and the FI zone. The Business Park 1 is the existing RP1, the Research Park 1 area. And this allows for high-rise buildings, which is the light purple on your screen. And then the Business Park 2 is the current Professional Office 1 zone. This area allows for low-rise buildings, and it's shown on the middle of your screen in the medium shade purple. And then your Flex Industrial is at the very top, the light gray area, and this is your industrial zone. This is intended to provide a location for light manufacturing. And then we've got a couple other districts. We've got our CO zone, which is going to be the dark green in color. This is going to be an exact transfer from the existing zone as well. And then we have the institutional. This is new. This is going to be the area of Thomas More University. And then we have special districts. So Crestview Hills only has one that I believe it's going to be your Crown Point Circle. This is a PUD, so it's going to just reflect on the zoning code as a PUD, and that will stay the same.
And Lookout Farm.
Lookout Farm, sorry. And then one thing I want to mention, in your existing code, you do have an MX zone. This is not mapped. It is in the text. This is also going to be a direct transfer. And the MX zone is used, it's a direct transfer, as I said. And the intent of this zone is to support approximately scaled redevelopment into two zones for a mixed-use development. The two zones, we intended to have a live-work-play atmosphere with a group of high-quality buildings and civic spaces with well-integrated landscape and streetscapes. And then getting into some things that are changing. So we do have, in the code, it's going to allow for accessory dwelling units. The working group did choose to allow these as a permitted use within the large lot subdivision, the conventional subdivision, the compact subdivision, and the mixed-use zone. Only if the zone is larger than 5,000 square feet, and the accessory dwelling unit does have to be attached to the primary structure. Short-term rentals. Other cities do have this in their zoning code. Crestview Hills is going to leave this out and just address it through the city ordinance. That gives you all a little bit more control over those short-term rentals, if you choose to have them. And then family childcare homes will be a conditional use within all residential zones. The accessory structure will change from 100 square feet to 120, so a slight increase. And then within the community commercial zone, so the shopping center zone currently, is going to allow for drive-throughs as a conditional use, only if they have an outlot building. So if they're like, maybe Panera, or Max and Irma's, or Carrabba's, those out parcels there that are standalone could potentially have a drive-through in the future. Next, dimensional requirements. So the working group chose to allow the recommended changes for encroachments. Two examples of this would be for a front porch, it can extend into the minimum required setback by five feet. And then the other example is going to be in the rear yard. It's going to be permitted to extend into the rear yard up to five feet or 50%, whichever is greater. And the other modification that they chose is to allow the flexible administrative modification. This is a 10% modification, and this is to reduce those cases that go to the Board of Adjustments. This is only a 10%, so very minor. An example would be if there's a 10-foot setback, you would be allowed one foot, so it could be nine instead of 10. That would prevent some cases from going to the Board of Adjustments. There are going to be a couple of character standards. So they did choose to implement building materials for commercial construction within the shopping center or the community commercial zone, and residential construction for new single-family homes. And this is just to ensure good quality homes. For fences, not much has changed, just the formatting. So it's going to be put into a chart with some pictures, so it's more user-friendly for the residents within the city to view. And then Article 8, there are some changes in there that cover natural resources and environment. So the city's code will still continue to have a hillside development. That's in the existing code. It's going to transfer over. Floodplain protection, stormwater management, and then odor, noise, dust, and vibration for construction. They chose not to allow viewshed protection, steam and water quality buffers, or green infill or grayfill development. For parking standards, there is a reduction in parking, off-street parking. So the consultant did recommend that these be reduced, and this is across Kenton County in general. And that's from, we do have these Cs of parking lots out there, and because of the shift in retail that goes to online, it really, we found we don't need all that parking anymore. And so there is a slight reduction based on the current code. And then the working group also allowed, chose to elect for parking flexibility. There's two alternatives to this. The first is parking credit, so bicycle parking, multi-tenant, or shared parking. So if you provide X number of a credit, you may be able to reduce your parking by so many parking spots. And then the other alternative standard is through a traffic impact study. So the customer or the consumer knows how much parking they need. So they can do a traffic impact study to reduce the amount of parking that's required per the zoning code, if they wish. Signs is going to be similar to the fencing. So it's going to be put into a chart, easy to read, has some pictures, definitions in there, more user-friendly. And there's another change in there, and the working group did allow to choose, oh, I'm sorry, chose to allow for murals to be within the institutional, so that Thomas More University area, and within the shopping center or the community commercial zone. And then the last slide is going to cover the processes and procedures. And so the new ordinance is making several changes to streamline processes. But we know that Crestview Hills is unique, and so maybe they didn't choose everything that all the other cities did. So I'm going to go over just a couple here. So for a map amendment or the concept plan procedure, the city chose to keep their existing procedure for the map amendment and concept plan, where city council will be the final action, and these within 90 days of the date, upon which the planning commission takes final action. For concurrent processes of variances and conditional uses, the city chose to keep their existing procedure that allows, I'm sorry, regulating variances needed that are identified during the map amendment process. Part of the reason is that the City of Crestview Hills has their own Board of Adjustments. So some other cities who are part of that joint board can have a variance at that map amendment stage, but we're going to keep that separate here. And then for final development plans, which is currently called the Stage 2, will be reviewed by staff, but the final decision will be made by the city administrator. So a final development plan is what is currently known as the Stage 2, and is required with any PUD. This will involve a staff-level review, with the city administrator being the final decision-maker. Currently, KCPC has the authority in some cases, and city council has the authority in others. It's just dependent on the zone. And then a final development plan approval will also constitute a final zoning permit. Under the current system, you're required to get a zoning permit after the final development plan approval. So if it's just a single development, that will be your automatic zoning permit versus having to go back through that process. And then for minor amendments to the final development plan, those will be made by the city administrator. And then major amendments will need approval from the city administrator. If the city administrator determines that a change is minor, the applicant would be required to file a new application of amendment to the concept plan or the Stage 1. And currently, KCPC has the authority in some cases, and city council does in others. I know that was quick, but that concludes my presentation. Do you guys have any questions or comments?
Any questions for Kristen? I know it was a lot of work. Appreciate everybody took their time working on this committee. It, a lot of decisions had to be made, and hopefully this will get us in line with everybody else and simplify the code somewhat that allows us to keep our city as unique as it is, but also help the developers out.
I just want to say that Kristen did a great job in keeping the group on task and made it very clear what our goals were for each meeting and the decision points we need to make. Because it was a big undertaking. You did a great job.
Thanks. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Appreciate y'all doing it, and thanks for not inviting me to be on.
We couldn't afford your hourly rate. No questions on that? Thank you very much.
Well, this isn't the first time you'll hear of it. This is just authorizing it to go, if you vote to approve it, to the planning commission, they'll come back after that.
And actually, a couple weeks ago, or last week, I guess it was, we had a subcommittee meeting from KCPC on Z21, and it was approved unanimously to come back to us, say, hey, we like it. And then there's a hearing on it. It will be, July?
It's July 18? I could be wrong.
I think, I was thinking of July 8.
July 8.
July 8, yeah. So with that in mind, we have order, under new business, we're moving this up for Ed, since he wasn't here for that. Under new business number number two, Order Resolution 2025-6-2, approve and send the updated zoning ordinance to the Kenton County Plan Commission for public hearing and review of the Z21 project. Anybody have any questions on that? If not, we need a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Mayor's report, no report tonight. City administrator's report.
In light of the agenda, I'll make it very brief. My written report is in your packet. I did want to alert the council members that use city email addresses that, for security reasons, it is recommended that government agencies, even local government, transition to a .gov website and email address. So probably in July, you may hear from Stacy to transition you to, you know, whatever you are, at crestviewhills.gov instead of .com. Your .com will still work. It'll just feed in the background. But this is done for, you know, security reasons. That's all I have there.
Okay, thank you. Continuing business, we have ordinance 2025-5-1, second reading, adopting S30 supplement to code of ordinances. Every year, we go through and codify, or we have a company codifies our ordinances, and this is basically just codifying everything that we did in 2024. So if there's no objection, need a motion for this?
Move for passage.
Second. Second. Any discussion? Since it's an ordinance, you roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2025-5-2, second reading of approving the 2025-2026 budget appropriating funds for the operation of the city government. Everybody should have a copy of that. This is, we had first reading last month. I don't believe there were any changes since last month.
Just confirming, police department's budget number.
Okay.
And then a better-than-expected beginning fund balance.
Okay. So that was under public safety, okay. Okay. Any questions on that? If not, need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion, Mr. Rule?
Second.
Got a second? Thank you. And, Mr. Lehman, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Oh, roll call, yes, I'm sorry. This is ordinance.
Mr. Lehman?
Yes.
Mr. McKinley?
Yes.
Mr. Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Thank you, for the second time. Okay, committee reports, Public Works. Oh, Thomas, I'm sorry. Thank you, skipping around here. Under new business, we have Order Resolution 2025-6-1, authorizing a contract with KYTC for the Thomas More Parkway Design Services. And that, we, the city got a grant to do pavement and stormwater work on Thomas More Parkway. And this is basically authorizing us to go out and find an engineer to do that work. Any questions?
Move for passage.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Now, Public Works, Mr. McKinley.
Yay. Turkeyfoot Road has been repaved, and the lines have been painted. And I found out tonight there's something else they did to the lines, make some plastic coated or so. Don't know what that does. I hope it doesn't affect the snowplow removal. But Turkeyfoot Road's been repaved, so that's a good deal. Our sidewalk project, there's an OKI meeting in June. We should get that project kind of moving forward here a little bit better than what we've been doing. We've been trying to get a grant for this for quite some time. At some point, we had to start over again. So hopefully this will get us back on the right foot with that. Horse Branch Road, we have, we need a, there's a survey to get a design, which we hope we have that in July. There was patchwork done by Edgewood. There's a sanitation line that needs to be replaced in the creek bed that may cause some lane blockages at some point down through Horse Branch Road. We'll let you know when that's going to happen. Lookout Farms Bridge, we're looking at the easements that are necessary to get this bridge project going. And I think the budget got approved tonight in our budget process, right?
Yes.
So that's a good deal. Sunset, there's a utility issue, is similar to what we ran into on Vernon, with the ultra-fiber lines and those things that they weren't put in deep enough. We're checking to make sure that they maybe were put in deep enough. We need to get approval that we can move forward with that, or we're going to have a problem. So we don't want to be too shallow, because at some point, these lines apparently crisscross the streets, which makes it even more difficult to tear the street up and rebuild it.
Just one update on that, just one update on that, Tim, it was after our meeting, is ultra-fiber and Rigler met, and they're going to work together on, the lines are only too shallow when they come out of their connection box. Other places are five feet down. So they're going to work together to get, push the line down when they excavate it. So that should get moving as soon as Rigler can free up some crews.
The estimate is July.
July. Okay.
July. Thomas More Repavement Project is pending agreement with the state for design work, which will fix the stormwater issues on Thomas More Parkway. Woods Point is part of our 2025 projects. We're looking to repave, not, no reconstruction necessary there, which we found through our boring process, that the road's in pretty good shape underneath. We don't have a problem that way. And finally, I'd just like to take a minute to thank the city manager and the mayor for reacting to what I consider a personal project. I really am concerned about the safety of the people to crosswalk at Thomas More Parkway. I don't see a lot of cars willing to stop for pedestrians. Pedestrians have the right of way. They did take one of our recommendations, and they have now flags posted at both sides of the walkway that people can wave flags and maybe call attention to the fact that they're one across the street. So we added an element of safety to that, and I just would like to tell whoever's listening to this to pass on to everybody that pedestrians have the right of way. Keep our students safe. There's too many stories on TV right now about crosswalks and people getting killed in crosswalks and dedicating things to people being killed. We don't want any of that. We want people to be safe. So thank you very much for your support on my personal issue.
We also installed that shield over the line to hopefully make it more, that was done recently by Public Works. So I appreciate you saying something about it.
Any questions for Public Works? Finance, Mr. Rule?
Yes, everyone should have received the May financial package that TJ distributed. Looking at the revenue, we're already at 100% in most categories, so that looks good. But I have to caution that there are adjustments, accrual adjustments, at the end of the year that could change that slightly. Same with the expenses. A lot of the Public Works stuff does get accrued at the end of the year, so it's a little tough to tell. So we'll see how that looks next month.
Any questions? Police Authority, Mr. Dorsey?
Yes. We held, we held our regular monthly meeting on May 19th, determined that there was indeed a quorum present. We reviewed all bills, warrants, and requests for payments, voted to stay solvent and pay the bills. The chief reported that Officer Curtis Bush had joined the department, passing all entry tests, and he joined our department on May 27th. Under old business, we held the second reading of the 25-26 budget. And as the city manager reportedly came in, the police budget came in a little under, and that was because the chief was able to get a $30,000 reduction in our health insurance by rebidding some things. So applaud him for taking the initiative to do that. That would be the end of my report.
Okay. Anything under safety?
Nothing.
Okay. Fire any miss? Chief Dickman?
Just a couple things to point out in our, in our May monthly report. The Northern Kentucky Water District, along with the Edward Fire Department, has completed all the hydrant flows. So as of the second or third week in May, everything should be completed throughout Crestview Hills as far as the water flows is concerned. So there should be no more disruption of service or discoloration in any water. However, our crews will be going out here starting in next week, starting the, now we go into the phase of painting the hydrants. Those hydrants that need attention get repainted, and will be restripped with the appropriate flows from the spring. So we'll make those changes here coming up, starting here next week or so. The department is also preparing for our new recruit class, starting in July. We have seven new recruits of our internship program that will be starting. So we have a new batch. We've had a number of our individuals graduate and have moved on from our programs and found jobs as a career within the program. And so we'll be filling that, and we're just, like everything else, kind of goes in cycles. We're starting with a new batch, and we'll be providing them their training, starting in July. That's all I have to report for right now.
Great. Any questions? The chief? Thank you. Unfortunately, Chief Slusher was not able to make it tonight. He had an emergency, so he is actually, I excused him from center replacements. Oh, Chief Hampton, I'm sorry. There is a report from Fort Mitchell in your packet. Yeah?
Mr. Dorsey, actually, we had the police department number a little too low. So the second reading increased to 25,000 when the final number came in. But you're absolutely right in that. But you're absolutely right, and that Chief Deggard found cheaper insurance rates. I think what we factored in is that cops grant that officer, which they don't realize till later.
Right.
So we had, that's what I think caused that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Kramer?
Zoning?
Thanks, Mayor. The committee has not met since our last meeting. We do have some, we do have some good news. Rektin Jacobs Orthodontics opened the 25 Town Center Boulevard, which is the office building across the street from us here. Elite Med Spa, which is located in Union, opened a second location, actually is opening a second location later this month, in the Cambridge Square Office condos on Centerview Boulevard, so we welcome them. And finally, the ribbon cutting for the renovated Cincinnati Children's Hospital location on Chapel Place, it's on June 17th, so we're very happy to see them recommit and expand their operation here. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Kramer? Thank you. Chair, Recycling, Mr. Weiss?
Nothing new to report.
Okay. Recreation?
The much-anticipated farmer's market is beginning tomorrow, on the Friday of the 13th. We're going to start at 2 o'clock to 6 p.m. here in the parking lot. And again, kudos to Stacy Callum for going out and really getting us the vendors that we need, trying to increase the produce vendors. So please stop by, tell your friends and neighbors, there'll be parking available, so just come on out. The other big news is that, again, we're coming up on our annual concert, June 20th, next Friday, 6:30 to 10:00 p.m. in concert, no pun intended, with Thomas More. Again, tremendous credit goes to Stacy, to TJ Holtman, and to Alex for putting this together with a group from Thomas More. It's been a great partnership that continues, so we look forward to everybody being there and coming in and having a good time. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Everybody has their assignments for next round?
I'd still like to point out that we are requesting that you do not bring alcohol to this concert. They are selling beer at the concert, and the reason you can't bring it is because it violates our liquor license. But please come and enjoy a great concert and have a good time. Don't bring it in, because we're checking.
You can buy it, and it's a Fleetwood Mac cover band, so.
Great, thank you. Our personnel, public relations personnel committee has met and went over all the evaluations, and everybody is doing a great job in approving the raises for the staff. Also, just under one other thing, city has, went out for RFP for city engineers, and we've received four of them, four engineering firms, and so we're reviewing those at the present. Communication Board, nothing to report on that? Communication, nothing new right now?
Just the .gov transition.
Yeah. That's all I have. Anybody want to make a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Mayor, just one quick thing. I just want to, I know Mr. Dorsey's going to have, I think, a formal report on the police authorities' car show next month, but I went, and I just want to commend the chief. I think it was an excellent event. Luckily, the rain held off, a lot of neat cars there, and some good food trucks, and just nice job on that.
I understand the two mayors, Paul M., chose the same vehicle, so Paul M. from Lakeside Park had to choose a different vehicle for the best of the mayors.
What was the vehicle?
It was a '49 Packer.
Wow.
So, yeah, so we must think alike. That's dangerous.
I prefer the '65 Shelby Cobra myself.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Thank you.
Too many to choose from.
We've got a motion for-
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Mean adjourn.